Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the special call meeting work session of the Board of Commissioners on July 10th. Just want you to know we'll only be covering TAB 1 this afternoon. We'll do all the rest of the tabs tomorrow morning meeting at nine o'clock. No motions today, no votes. This is strictly for information. And with that, I will turn the podium over to Beatty Tazar to give a presentation on budget for the county managers departments.
There I am. All right. Today we'll be going over the countywide support administration FY18 budget request. Just to get us started, the departments we'll be hearing from today are going to be the county attorney, the county clerk, county manager's office, communications, the ethics board, finance and economic development, human resources, internal audit, and the medical examiner. So the three-year spending with the FY17 adopted budget and FY18 proposed budget can be found on this slide for all the relevant departments. As you will see, we don't have much in the way of department request in FY18, the most being down at the end when we talk about medical examiner, HR, internal audit, and budget. We will also today as part of finances presentation discuss risk management in their claims fund.
So what about the $206,000 for HR?
We'll talk about that as well.
Okay. Thought maybe that was chump change.
It's all change. So without further ado, I'd like to call up Assistant County Attorney Mr. Bill Rolling to discuss the county attorney.
Thank you, buddy. Chairman Boyce, Commissioners, County Manager, Bill Rolling, Assistant County Attorney is here on behalf of our county attorney, Deborah Dance, to present our budget request. There we have our mission statement, what our desires and goals are for our department to be able to provide exceptional, cost-effective legal services to all units of county government, including the Board of Commissioners, constitutional county officers, county manager, county agencies, and departments, employees, and otherwise unrepresented Cobb County boards and agencies appointed by the elected officials. Our office aims to provide such services with an emphasis on providing proactive preventative counsel and representation engaging professional ethical conduct and being accountable. Our organizational chart, as you can see, we have the county attorney, Deborah Dance, Assistant County Attorneys, myself. Our office is basically divided up into two other departments beyond that, which is the litigation attorneys. We have five litigation attorneys and also then four transactional attorneys that we work with for a total of 11 attorneys that we have in our office. Our administrative division has six personnel, including our administrative division manager, who's Trish Misko, who I'm indebted to say helped me a great deal in making this presentation. I want to let Trish know that. Our administrative coordinator, three paralegals, as well as administrative specialists. Now, some of the departments that we represent, of course, is public safety, it takes a large portion of our time, public services, and parks and recs, government service centers, senior services, community development, of course, is a big portion of what we support as well, sports services, information services. There's not probably a part of Cobb County that we don't touch and interface with at some point in time, whether it be specifically with contracts or in HR-related matters, or how it would be. Of course, all those that are being presented as well today, the county clerk's office, communications director, and HR. Now, the elected officials that we work with beyond the Board of Commissioners, I stand here before today, of course, the sheriff's office that we work with regularly, and the Superior Court, we have Superior Court judges, District Attorney's Office, of course, Superior Court clerk and judges, and then the state court, the state court judges and clerk as well over there, probate court and its judges, magistrate court, all of them call upon us for various services depending upon what they may be. Lastly, but not least, of course, the tax commission we regularly work with regarding various issues. Here's a quick litigation summary of what we've done this past year. There's over 71 different litigation cases that our office has defended. Affirmative actions, those are those actions that we pursued on behalf of Cobb County. You have 161 of those cases this past year, most of these in liens in the community development realm, either weed liens or unsafe abatement actions. We have secured liens in that matter for a little bit over $56,000 this past year in 2016. We've collected almost $14,000 in liens and attorney fees, we've collected almost $2,400. Now, various miscellaneous actions, most of these are on behalf of the tax commissioner regarding tax liens. We've been able to attain in excess to disperse funds on behalf of the tax commissioner of just a little bit over $1 million. A little bit more on our litigation side, we have what's referred to as dispositive motions, those motions which can completely eliminate a case or eradicate it at a pre-trial stage. We filed over 13 of those matters this year. We've been very fortunate in both the trial court and as well as in the appellate court level, and we have 100% favorable determination in those cases. A year in review regarding our contracts, 2016 contract transactional summary, the total number of contracts that were reviewed, routed, and executed to the county attorney's office for fiscal years 2016 is 608 contracts that our office has reviewed and presented. Year-to-date, for 2017, we have 562 contracts that have been reviewed and submitted. The one downside of that is that there might be, speaking with Chairman Boyce, there might be a workers' compensation claim that might be coming soon regarding his signing hand and how tired it's been getting. Lastly, we have open records, our government QA. In 2015, the county attorney's office was designated as the open records custodian for the 22 departments within the county. In March of this year, the Cobb County Attorney's Office launched GOVQA, which is a Freedom of Information Act Public Records Management System. It's an online system. The system allows our office to proactively manage, review, track, and archive all document requests and responses. We have a lot of compliments that we received regarding this from the public, as well as from internal departments regarding loading up the system and ease of access for people to be able to get to the materials. So far, since this system has come online, we have had 648 open records act requests, which is averaging so far almost a little over five and a half request, open records act request a day that we're receiving. With that, is there any questions the board may have? Our last slide is, if you will, is our budget, and there is not a request for increase at this time. All right. Thank you.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
You have one or two vacancies right now?
We have one vacancy.
Okay. And you're filling, you're in the process of filling?
We're in the process of filling it. Actually, an offer was made this past Friday when we were waiting to hear one little piece from HR, and we should hopefully be able to wrap that up this afternoon.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Okay, in effort of time, we're going to hit the next few departments with a little bit of rapid fire, but certainly we'll stop with any questions that you might have. But we have the county clerk next on the docket. Their job is to make us all look really good up here and make sure our records are in order. And they are basically the record keepers of the county, and they are going to be in compliance with any relevant laws, rules, and policies. And not to mention, I just butchered that, but we'll keep on moving. Their organizational chart is as followed with the wonderful Ms. Pam Mayberry as our county clerk, Ms. Lori Jordan as the deputy clerk, Angela Cunningham as the other deputy clerk, and Robin Presley as the deputy clerk, with Judy Solomon as their administrative assistant. The FY18 request for the county clerk is a total of $6,997. This is basically for their ACCG conference and Georgia Clerks Institute for Required Certification that is required part of their training. Due to the continuation budget, again, these were not reflected in the 17 budget, and they're not in the FY18 proposed budget, and this is their request. Any questions for the clerk? All right, next is the county manager's office. Their mission statement is up on the screen, but the overall purpose of the county manager is to manage Cobb County in accordance with state and federal law, local ordinances, and the policies adopted by the Board of Commissioners. The next slide, you'll see the organizational chart with the county manager, Mr. Rob Hosack, and all of his direct reports, along with the executive secretary. Now, you'll notice, this new organizational chart has a deputy county manager currently in place, and there will be direct reports to that deputy county manager for those who have yet to be determined at this time. But this is just a tentative outline of what their new organizational structure will look like.
Chairman Boyce, it would just be restructuring the chart, sir. The only additional hire would be the hiring of the deputy.
And as for their FY18 requested increase, we had $1,400 in overall increases in registration, and that's for ACCG and GCCMA. That's just normal increases that have gone along from FY, I guess you could say, 16 to today. Now, there's $3,500 in additional increase, or request, I should say, for office supplies, mainly due to the use of office supplies from the BOC and the public service agency. They've had increased usage there, and the county manager's office covers those office Any further questions for the county manager?
What's the horizon for you hiring a deputy county manager of our office?
Commissioner Cupid, the position closed today, ma'am. Ideally, I would like to attempt to do all the interviewing and fill the position August 1st, circa August 1st, ma'am.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further questions? Next up, we'll have Cobb TV, our communications folks that run this entire operation to make sure we get our presentations put online and all of our information broadcast to the public. Their main purpose is to provide Cobb County residents in the business community with accurate and up-to-date information regarding Cobb County and its activities. Their organizational chart can be found in front of you, and right now, the communications director at this time is still vacant, and that is a direct report, again, to the county manager, and they have three managers that would report to that position. Right now, in communications, their FY18 budget is actually going to be a reduction. Now, this is not a reduction to the general fund, this is just a reduction to that individual unit. Right now, we're moving the web department, it's being transferred to the IS department. So if anything, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, so the overall general fund effect is a $0 transition, but communications will see a reduction in their FY18 budget from that personnel move along with the associated operating costs.
Okay, I thought, go back to the wire diagram. The one before that. There you go. What's the timeline to hire the new communications director?
We hope to bring the three finalists to the BOC executive session for a meet-and-greet interview process first meeting in August, sir.
Okay, so you're going to have all the commissioners interview them? Is that your plan?
Or we're going to bring them in similar to what we've been doing with some of the other department head positions that report to the county manager, yes, sir. They would come in during executive session to be interviewed, or just to at least have informal discussions with the board prior to me presenting a recommendation to you and the Board of Commissioners, sir.
And I understand Christina left last Friday, was her last day? Alexander? Abernathy, I mean?
I believe so, yes, sir.
And then Gary Witt's coming back today?
Today's Gary's first day, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Next is the ethics board. Their mission is to receive, hear, and investigate complaints of standards set forth by Cobb County's Ethics Code. Thankfully, we haven't had to utilize this budget in many years. About the ethics board, a little bit of background, it's a seven-member board, five are appointed, two are elected. The five appointed, the five appointments come from, one from the BOC, one from the Elections Board, one from the Civil Service Board, one from Cobb County Employees, and one from the Cobb Bar Association. The two elected are from the Cobb homeowners, both the east and the west. Their budget request for FY18 has remained flat as it always has in subsequent years. It's more or less a contingency in case that board needs to meet, but also, we have had a few expenditures for required legal notices in that unit in the past two years, but no official increase requested there for FY18.
And all those positions are filled from the board?
For the appointments?
Right.
I would have to...
Chairman, if I may, as an aside with respect to appointments, this is not a request to be assessed in the near future, but if you look at the way the appointments are, you have to be a resident from a homeowners association to be considered for one of the homeowner's positions, and we have a lot of communities that are not in a homeowners association and therefore could not be considered. So there may be a way of updating that to give opportunities for all Cobb County residents to be considered for those posts.
Noted. All right. No bias here, but we have the Finance and Economic Development Budget with Director Bill Volkman. Our mission statement is to provide the overall financial, economic development, and risk management services for Cobb County Government. Our reporting structure is as follows. We have several divisions within the Finance Department and Economic Development, its accounts payable, business innovations and development. We have a general accounting division. We have our Economic Development Division, budget division, risk management, payroll, and systems. All of those are overseen by either a division manager or a administrator. And then, we also have the Treasury Division as well. Our 18 requests, we have one. We had a budget analyst who left the office two years ago, but due to the restriction on vacant positions, we were unable to fund that position and get a person in that position. Now, our staff currently in budget has been doing a great job, so I would be remiss if I didn't mention Miss Susan Revel, Gillette Hoylett, and Mariana Gunther for the work they've done thus far with all the budget requests that we've received in the last year or so, but there's only so much we can do with a division of three where we should have four. So they've done a great job of stepping up, but with the increased requests that are coming down the pike, we would really like to see in FY18 the funding of our budget analyst position as we move forward to kind of spread the workload around within the budget office.
Excuse me, Chair. Yes, how many budget analysts do you have?
Right now, we have what we refer to as one specialist and one analyst, but we have one of the analysts is vacant. So it would be three total that are working under our budget administrator, Miss Susan Revel.
And then each advise each department?
Yes, ma'am.
Each elected official?
Our, that vacant position was, I believe Luke's responsibilities were public services, if I'm not mistaken. He had parks, libraries, things of that nature, and so those have had to be distributed out to the other analyst and to the director.
Do each of the departments have an analyst within their organization?
They do.
Okay. Seems very slim.
Depending on the size, most have internal staff that are in charge of their own budgets, and our budget staff coordinates with not only their budget contact, but a lot of times their managers as well, as we go through the budget process. All right, on the risk management side, now again, this is in our claims fund. This is different from the general fund. It is, it manages the risk operations of the county and all of our claims and our losses. The FY18 request for the claims fund is $420,000. Again, it's split up between operating and capital. Within the FY18 operating request, there's $370,000, which is two items in particular. One, it's increased, we're seeing increase in collision claims based on having more take-home cars on the road. It's just more vehicles on the road is going to result in more, more loss. And we're also seeing property insurance premiums go up as the assessed value on our properties goes up as well. For our capital, it's obviously to replace some of the collisions that occur on the road. What we've seen is with the new Ford, the new Ford Taurus models, they total relatively easy. Now, from my conversations, that is, in terms of their reliability, the explanation I got was they were meant to provide more safety to the officer and the vehicle, but in doing so, that causes the vehicle to take on more damage when there is an incident, if that explanation suffices. But again, third-party communication here, so hopefully I didn't get that one wrong. No disrespect to Ford, I promise. And with that, any questions on finance or risk?
So, explain this $420,000. Is that for a great premium for crashing?
No, what it's a, what it is, sir, is that that fund is a self-insured fund, and so all of our losses, we don't have insurance where we pay out of pocket. So when we have more cars basically on the road, we then have to come out of pocket more when there's an incident that requires us to not, sometimes not just replace a car, but to make a repair on a vehicle perhaps that wasn't totaled.
What's that?
It's a lot of money. And I can get you the breakdown between what the collision and what the property insurance would be. Unfortunately, I don't have it right in front of me, but I can provide that to the board.
Is that based on actual or just anticipated?
No, we've seen an actual slight uptick in our losses at this point.
More than slight.
Well, increase, 15, 18, operating, increase in collision and...
What's your comment?
Something claims or property insurance. What, sorry?
Your glasses over there.
Comprehensive, there you go. So we're paying premiums, some insurance comes for $370,000. Or that's self-insured?
What I'm saying here, sir, I'm sorry if I'm being confusing here, but the 370 is for the combination of the claims and the property insurance. So what I can do is I can get you the, I don't have the separated amounts in front of me.
Well, it says premiums, that means we're paying somebody.
Well, the property insurance premiums would be for the, for the actual buildings.
We're running into buildings with these cars?
No, sir. No, sir, not at all. I mean, I would hope not, I can't get on the record.
Maybe that explains why they're totally new, yeah.
No, but the property insurance premiums are related to our buildings and the property insurance we have in our buildings, where we still have a policy for that. Now, our cars were self-funded for, so the losses that we experienced with the vehicles were coming out of pocket for.
So it's $370,000 just for comprehensive claims and property, not collision?
Right. Collision and comp claims.
Well, if buildings don't have collision...
Well, there's two separate items here, sir, and they combine to make up the $370,000.
So who are the collision for? The cars?
Yes, sir.
But we're self-insured, you said?
Right, so we have to repair the cars that are involved in the...
All right, so they're not really premiums for collision, those are...
No, sir, this is, they're two separate items.
So comprehensive claims are because our properties are older?
Two separate items.
And they're starting to, they need repairs? Is that what those are for?
The property insurance premiums are, with the assessed values on our buildings going up, and having kept relatively flat budgets throughout the last two years, we need to pay higher premiums for our higher assessed values in our buildings.
For fire and everything?
Come again?
For fire?
Yes, for any structural loss.
Even after depreciation? These buildings are not young. Are they appreciating, are they praising the value of the building or the land?
I would imagine it would be the total value of the structure.
Well, I don't understand this. None of these buildings are new.
We have some, for instance, the new buildings that we just had a loss last year with one of our Parks and Recs concessions buildings.
Here comes Calvary.
If you'd like to give it a shot.
Yes, sir, you're exactly right.
I understand it.
You understand, okay. We have aging buildings within the county, but to replace those is at a higher cost. For example, we had a couple fires at some Parks and Recs facilities, and the value that we had those insured for was, let's say, slightly less than the replacement.
So the policy is for full replacement value?
Full replacement of the facility, yes, sir.
At today's...
At today's prices. So if we have a building that was in the 50s and it may be, you know, fully depreciated, if that building were to burn to the ground today, this insurance would allow us to go back and replace that building up to code and standards that we would expect today.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, with that, we will go to the next side, which is Human Resources. I'll hand it over to Mr. Tony Hagler. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Human Resources Department is here to support all of the county departments and the employees and retirees for the county, providing services for salary benefits development in the different areas. The organizational structure of the department is divided up into five functional areas, four divisions. One is the employment services, one is comp and benefits, systems and records, and then learning development, and then the fifth area is our employee relations specialist. So the budget for the HR department, the increase for the $206,000 for FY18 that's requested is reflective of three contracts, multi-year contracts that were approved by the board after the adoption of the FY16 budget. Two of those are for HR talent management systems, one's for applicant tracking, and the other is for our learning management system. And then the third item is an agreement to provide service awards gift programs that was approved by the board as well for a three-year contract. So those three items total the 206 that's requested as an increase.
You said these were passed last year by the board?
They were passed after the FY16 budget, but they were not included when the 17 budget was held flat to the FY16.
But did the board approve these?
Yes, sir.
So why didn't we fund them?
Well, they were funded and approved at the time of the board. I can't speak to why it wasn't in the budget item when it was done for 17.
What's the sense of having the board approve something if we're not going to fund it?
We unfunded all of them.
My vacancy, this is gifts.
No, I'm saying, we, the board approved these, right?
Right.
So why didn't we buy them?
Yes, sir, you're exactly right, and that's, and that's the case when we presented the 17 critical needs. We had a couple other cases that were very similar, where we approved a contract or a purchase order, something along those lines that would obligate us to increase the budget. Basically, by mandating that we have a flat budget, departments were asked to absorb these increases. And that's, that's the challenge you get in when you say you have a continuation or flat budget, is that board may have taken action to authorize them to move forward, but then they're asking the departments to absorb these increases within their current budgets if possible. One of the ways that we're working to help you understand that as a process is also by providing the BOC with the bi-monthly worksheet showing these are the items that we're approving through fund balance appropriation, or these are the FY18 impact items, which still have to be now either decided whether you're going to include those in the FY18 budget adoption, which would be our recommendation, but in years past by saying you're having a flat budget, those items basically said, we're not going to approve those, department has to eat those costs in their current budget as they stand.
All right. I get all that, but, you know, we shouldn't be, we should not be presenting something in the future. We should not be presenting them to the budget, to the board, unless we have the money to pay for it. That makes no sense.
Absolutely. And that's the key of that worksheet and to help you to have that understanding. When we have the budget discussions, I know we met with Commissioner Cupid today, that was one of the key line items that we're showing, is these are items that are approved that we need to take first priority into the 18 budget process because the board has authorized a department such as Tony's or some other department to enter into an agreement that's going to have an escalating cost in future years such as this.
All right, well, it makes no sense that we present something to the board that we can't afford to pay for.
I completely agree, sir.
All right, so like I said, I'm not going to talk about what happened in the past, and in the future, there should really only be two submissions during the year, the initial budget and then the mid-year review. None of this cherry picking in between, you know, when we get, some people takes advantage of the process to get some one or two positions slid through. So in the future, the budget process, this is going to be developed, we're only going to be talking about these twice a year.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And it's up to the staff, Mr. Hosack, to let us know that the board, we don't have the money to pay for this, so we're not going to bring it to you, all right? Because it's just, again, it just sounds, doesn't make any sense to the public, because some guy like me comes in here and says, well, we approved it, so why didn't we buy it? All right, so, okay.
Okay. The last item on the sheet, sir, is a request...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not done yet. So are these items on the, on that part of that critical needs list that we presented to the board last month?
Yes, we have a lot of those items. We had several of those for discussion. Libraries was one that stands out in my memory as a critical need. That was a perfect example. Similar to this is that we approved a contract for library materials in the previous year, but it did not, the increase did not get included in their budget.
All right. All right, so that critical needs list exceeds the amount of money we have left over.
That is correct, sir.
All right, so we have prioritized that list among the commissioners?
We, we have distributed it out and then we are going to, the direction that we were given is to discuss that again in September.
Right.
And go through that list and have some conversations about what, if anything, that's going to be funded off that list.
All right, but we need to have that priority established before September, so we don't waste any time with it.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
The last item we're, have a request for is, is an additional request to the FY18 budget. And that's $21,500 to, to fund our training contract with UGA for Executive Support Professional Program. It's a program we typically have done every other year. We haven't had the program in a couple of years was the last time we had it. And so we were seeking funding to have the program for the FY18 budget. Any questions? Thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, Latona Thomas, Internal Audit Director. So the first thing you see is our mission is simply to provide independent, objective assurance and consulting services to add value to the county operations. Our report, reporting structure is as presented, is myself, two auditors, and an admin coordinator. What we included this time was the audit committee just to show you the oversight responsibilities that they have over our function. So for us, our FY18 budget includes registration fees and travel for our ongoing continuing professional education training that's required for us to do our job, professional subscriptions and memberships of $334. And then what I've included here is, back in March 2015, the audit committee recommended two items. One is professional services for as-needed audit services where we can secure the services of a consulting firm to come in and perform those services that we may not have the expertise in-house. For instance, if we have an IT security audit we need to perform, we don't have IT auditors. We need to secure the services for one of those agencies. And then they also recommended an additional position in our area just based on existing staff levels. Originally, they recommended at the staff level, but as we discussed in the audit committee meeting this morning, that really needs to be a supervisory lead position to assist with, with some of the workload. In terms of FY18 challenges, what that is, is just maintaining an acceptable service level of audit coverage. And we'll be discussing that more in the audit committee meetings coming up and as I meet with Commissioners. Any questions?
Commissioner.
The, the first two items, registration fees, travel, training, and all that. You say that it's required to do your job.
Yes.
Were you, did you not do those things this year?
We have, but remember it was flat, so our staff really wasn't able to go and do some external train, training. What we've been having them doing is webinars, doing some reading subscriptions and, and answering questions that way. But they really need to get out into the field and, and go to external training. One of the things our standards require is that we maintain an acceptable level of proficiency. And in doing that, we need to get out and really get some other training, what I call more strategic training.
So based on our conversations over the last couple of weeks?
Okay.
If we were, y, y, your assertion is that if we hired certain kinds of people, we would find efficiencies that would more than pay for those positions?
Absolutely.
Okay. So would you be willing, or are you, are you able to define what those positions would be and then link them to kind of efficiency we might be getting from those?
We'll actually do that during this streamlined risk assessment process.
Okay.
With audit committee. We'll be bringing that information to you.
Okay, all right.
And once we look at our analysis of available hours and go through the projects and the level of service coverage you guys would like to see, then you can make that assessment at that time.
Sure.
And, you know, based on the information you provided to us on the audit committee?
Yes.
Over the past, what, a year, two years, there's been multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars that your department has uncovered and saved this county, is that correct?
Absolutely. In 2015, in our calendar year, 2015 annual report, our cost savings, cost avoidance, increased revenue was about $1.34 million in that one year alone.
So it seemed to me that, that this is money well spent, that we should look for ways to find efficiencies or inefficiencies and correct those, and you need the resource to do that. So I'm fully supportive of that.
We appreciate that, because it, it doesn't always result in a quantitative benefit, but the qualitative benefit is certainly there in terms of efficiencies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gullit with Medical Examiner.
It was close. I know, right, me again. I, I, I didn't wear my pajamas for you. But it was kind of a close thing. So our mission statement's pretty straightforward. It's lifted directly out of the Georgia Death Investigation Act, which is essentially our legislative source of authority. Go ahead. And our organizational chart is startlingly simple because we don't have that many people. So we really have two functional branches. We've got our investigative side of the house under our Operations Manager. They handle responding to the scene of death, investigation and transportation of the decedent under our Deputy Chief ME. The morgue operations side of the house responsible for performing the exams. But in reality, there is a tremendous amount of overlap between the two because pretty much everybody does everybody else's job. Every case gets assigned to one of the two medical examiners. Of course, requires a lot of work. All right. So our budget years are not as easy as everybody else's because for all practical purposes, we're a brand-new department from 2015 on. I actually got here in March of 2015, and that was the point that the entire budget structure changed. So our organizational and financial structure is so different from 2016 to 2015, it's very difficult to compare. Unfortunately, we've had continuation budgets that have all reflected back to a budget cycle before I got here, which has added some significant challenges. In 2015, we basically worked with the county manager and finance and just had no budget. We just asked for everything we needed, and sometimes we got it. In 2016, our entire budget worked because there was an accounting error. And we did everything based on a single accounting error. And in 2017, they fixed that accounting error. And so our operating budget that went away, we had to come back and ask for the board to replace. So personnel budget, if you look at our 15 budget, that's when everything changed. That's when we came along, Dr. Boggs and myself. So it jumped significantly. We saw a lot of personnel changes in our department in FY16, so there were a lot of changes. But what I really want to point out is our overtime budget, because that's a big deal. You're seeing our overtime budget. It really doesn't matter what number we put in that box because we're pretty much going to continue to do our jobs and we're going to continue to pay for it. Like any other job in public safety or EMS, we don't schedule our work. In those fields, what they do is take shift numbers and base on an average number of calls for that timeframe. We don't actually have enough investigative staff to cover one person on shift 24/7, so we manage caseload by sending people home on call and paying them when they come back. We average 30 to 40 hours a week of overtime calls after hours. Sometimes that number goes up to 60 hours a week. And pretty much until you give me permission to say we're not coming, we're going to base our overtime budget entirely on how many calls come in. After my arrival and after Dr. Boggs' arrival, we began investigating and accepting nearly double the prior number of caseload. So we did that with no additional staff members, and as such, our overtime cost came. Before FY17, the way we managed our overtime cost, because you notice there is a significant difference, is we sent people home during the day. If you worked at night and generated overtime, we'd send you home during the day. We're already short-staffed, and so sending people home was making things even harder. At the beginning of 17, we were asked to do some additional important projects that we needed staff. So we started not sending them home and actually saw what our real overtime numbers were like. Our operations budget, this is the other side of the budget that changed significantly. Of course, in FY15, Dr. Fris' contract drops out, which is why you see such a big difference. But that professional services line item starts to come up. That's actually the operating budget for most of the morgue operations that was originally covered by his contract. So this was a line item that didn't really exist until he left, and then we had to pick up all of the operational costs that were part of his contract. As you can see, it, we're trying to dial it in. We, we haven't figured out exactly how much it costs us to do cases. That being said, the FY16 over balance was mainly for holdover costs from vendors that we didn't get timely billing from. We've got at least one who we have a hard time getting billed for. Grants. We've applied for several grants this year, trying to address our shortcomings. These are all non-matching federal grants, and so they may represent increased enhancements for our budget. We won't get any word on those until September 17. Trust me, you'll be the second or third to know when we do. We're, though, not 100% sure about funding status. Some of these grants are actually subject to have their funding cut out. So for our FY18 budget, what I really like is a budget that reflects that I actually work here now and that this is how I actually run the place as opposed to back to the way that, before I got here. So the adjusted budget numbers that you're seeing are, are actual personnel and operational budget for our new employees, the ones that were just approved, as well as our current, and to fix our operational expenses to a more accurate level. Our overtime budget there is for 12 months of our current overtime rate. We can cut that number to any number you'd like, but we're going to still go to calls and we're going to still have people showing up and, and working. So based on the fact that we're still really short-staffed, I mean, you know, we can go back to the prior model, but it's just going to be short-staffed during working hours, which means there's delays. After hours, there's still always delays because we're, we're short-staffed. Now, if you want to actually talk about things we'd like as opposed to just fixing what's wrong, we will need a new microscope for our new medical examiner. But after that, the, the transport service, we have an RFP out that we're working on. We don't know how much that'll cost. We'll have to bring that to the board sometime in the following year. The other things are things that we have been asking for for a while. One is to do outside toxicology testing. Both of these items are things that we did put in for grant funding on. They are things that over time we would like to do. The outside toxicology testing, our toxicology turnaround is about 90 days with our current lab. And if we paid for it, it'd be about 14. And so that represents a pretty significant change. And then we need a lot of work to, to get accredited. One, we need a new building. But the other thing we need is somebody to help us write a lot of the procedures and policies, et cetera. It's about a year and a half to two years worth of work. And so we would like to have an accreditation coordinator help us with that. That's one of those things that, you know, if we were able to do it now, we would be ready to be accredited when we move it into a new building. If not, it's going to, you know, add some time to that. But what you've seen for our budget is, is essentially a flat budget just reflecting the changes that it had since then. And enhancements would be nice, but we can live without them.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gullit. With the transport service, wouldn't that reduce overtime?
It, it's not going to change overtime a tremendous amount in the sense that our investigators will still have to respond to all of the scenes. It'll change it a little bit in the sense that the investigator will then not have to go back to the office to, to transport the decedent back to the office. Where I think the transport service really reflects some, some significant savings is primarily in the fact that it outsources our workman's comp. Because our investigator is essentially responding to a scene by themselves and responsible for moving the decedent by themselves, there's a lot of workman's comp there. We hurt an investigator on a pretty routine basis. And fortunately, I have very young investigators who don't get hurt for very long. But we've had to pay out significant workman's comp claims in the past. And, and routinely, we get to 300, 400-pound decedents. A lot of times, we're able to get public safety to help us, either fire or police, but sometimes we hurt them, and that's not good either. So this would basically be a chance for us to let somebody else move the bodies and, and prevent injuries for our staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain the outside laboratory service for toxicology, how we're doing it now?
Absolutely.
And what that would do?
So we use the Georgia Bureau of Investigation Crime Lab for our toxicology testing. The bonus is, it's basically free. We don't pay anything for our toxicology testing, which is great. The downside is, is that we get in line with the rest of the state. And so their, their average turnaround for us is between 80 and 90 days. About 60% of our cases require toxicology testing. So that means we can't even start the process of finalizing the case until 80 to 90 days out. And that, you know, obviously is adding significant delays. It's one of the things that, when we look at some of the opioid deaths, we would like to be able to tell what some of these drugs are faster because if there's a, a particular spike of a certain type of drug, I think law enforcement would really like to know that. But our, our current testing protocol just relies on, on free. It's good, fast, cheap, pick two. And so we chose cheap and good, and so we don't have fast. The service that we would use is, there are several outside laboratories that specialize in post-mortem toxicology testing. And the one that we have used, we use it for specialty testing right now. And that lab has, has a guaranteed 14-day turnaround. In our experience, it's usually more like seven to 10. You get results back the following week. It's pretty impressive. So that's one of the things that would significantly affect our ability to turn cases around, which would mean faster death certificates out the door. Thank you.
All right, well, that concludes our presentation on the county-wide support administration FY18 budgets. Thank you for your time, if you have any questions.
Yes, just would like to get a copy of your presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. One point of clarification, Commissioner Cupid. When you asked earlier if every department had a budget analyst, I just wanted maybe provide a point of clarification. While some do, the larger ones have, might have a person that's dedicated to their budget. A lot of times, within most departments, it's a person's job within a job. If that makes sense, like their side job is to help with budget prep, so they're not a sole budget source. So I just wanted to provide that point of clarification for the board. Thank you.